Yeah, that's all I know, actually. I don't know why they said, you know, for each other, like. You have to be like this. Like, that's wrong, that's wrong.
That's wrong, that's wrong. My hair's uneven. Your nails are dusty.
Your nails are all colors. I actually love that hat though.
Oh, yeah. And I have to buy one.
I paid for this one.
Do you pay?
No, I just bought it.
She must be doing something.
No.
Sorry, but I'm gonna get it.
That's what I have. They said the plus. I wasn't the plus. Did you say it was easier to break them, the regular ones? Because it's so big and it's like so much. I had to get a new one because my, I always got.
So they saw it. They saw it like twenty-nine dollars.
Oh, my sister's on one.
With a.
Text.
Just call.
Yeah. I already broke my, like, the case, probably, but I forgot. I don't want these off. It has like a. Especially on the.
Oh, yeah.
Practice things together.
Okay, what do they probably mean? This guy named. Eric.
Who?
The guy.
I have don't, we don't talk to him.
Okay, you know you'll be on camera.
So they practice like somewhere else, I don't know where.
Uh, no.
They can't practice like. They're not.
Waiting.
But nothing of them, just driving. Are you gonna, do you have a desk? Um, okay. Remember that? Yeah.
Ow.
It's really chilly. At all? No, what's the current kind of business in like a week? Because the current country is very. About what? My sister has one credit left and she thinks you're. I, uh, okay. But they actually did down here to help.
Why?
All the way back.
And then down? Oh, okay.
These are the ones, I've got one.
And I have. I, I can work. For my. Except to get some.
Okay, call, call the meeting to order. Mayor Dukes is, uh, out of the country with his, uh, family, so I'm filling in for him tonight.
Can't hear you, sir.
I said Mayor Dukes is out of the country.
No, sir.
It's on. Okay, well, we'll start with the invocation with, uh, Von Sullivan.
Just stand, please. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for the beauty of this day, Lord, and, uh, Father, we thank you so much for the occasion of this council meeting and, uh, these men and women who are willing to serve and this community and represent their wards. Father, we thank you for their service and their sacrifice. Father, we thank you for, um, this, uh, beautiful city that we en, we enjoy and, uh, Father, we give you the glory and the honor for that. Father, decisions that are before, uh, these men and women tonight, I just ask your wisdom and discernment be upon them and that the decisions that are made tonight, uh, be for the good of the whole. Thank you for our men and women who are all over the world defending our freedoms tonight. Give them peace and safety. Father, we thank you so much for your son, Jesus, and the sacrifice that you both made on our behalf through his death on the cross, and it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Mercedes. Yes. Yes, sir.
I budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I don't have any public announcements, uh, regarding city activities. I, I would like to take a moment to express my appreciation, I, for the, uh, uh, for the work that was done by many folks within the organization to help the, uh, the city, uh, not miss a beat while I was, uh, off for about a month, uh, because of a medical issue. So, uh, I want to express my appreciation particularly to Tim Lyon, stepped in as acting city manager, uh, Von Sullivan, uh, and then everybody else kind of sitting right over, over in that neck of the, the, uh, the, um, the audience, uh, that, uh, kept things rolling real, real, uh, efficiently and effectively. So, thank you very much. Are we, are we still not?
Oh, you're good now.
Okay, okay.
I'd, I'd like to welcome you back and I'm glad that you are, um.
I know I'm maybe not the same person that I was before.
Well, you're furrier. Uh, the other thing I was gonna say is a year ago tomorrow, we lost an assistant chief at our fire department, Reese Morrison, and just as, as we go through this day, remember every one of our city employees and remember everybody that wears a uniform, whether it's fire, police, or anything else it is, and our street maintenance guys and, and water maintenance, they, they're dangerous jobs too. So just, when you see a city employee, remember that many of them do things that we wouldn't do and we need to appreciate them daily. And tomorrow for our fire department's gonna be a rough day.
Well, I would just like to say, um, city manager, Mr. Guy Henson, uh, we are happy you're back and we thank God that he took care of you while you was away. So, welcome back.
Does anyone else have any announcements? Mr. Sullivan, anything on the Parks and Recreation front?
I have Fran's here.
Full business begins March first.
Okay, we're, we're, we're gonna be looking for pool guards, correct?
We're, we'll be taking applications soon for summertime help, yes, sir. And, um, there's always a line at the community center door on, 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 uh, March the first to buy, uh, pool passes and reserve for the pool for their date that they prefer on the, to have a party. So, yeah, if you think you want to do something like that, better be there.
Okay, the consent agenda, these items are placed on the consent agenda so that the council, by unanimous consent, can approve re, routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be remo, removed and heard in a regular order. Is there anyone that wants to remove a consent agenda item?
Do you have a motion?
Motion to.
No, I can't make them up.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay. All in favor, s, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Consent agenda passed.
The first discussion item is consider the award of the sale of general obligation bonds of the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, in the amount of twenty million dollars and no cents and no cents, uh, to the lowest bidder. This will require a roll call vote and, uh, I'm going to pass out the, um, a quick summary of the bids that were received today. Greg, Mr. Nito, Greg Nito and John Weidman, our legal counsel, uh, are here in the audience to, um, uh, to help answer any questions that we might have. We were talking about this before, uh, upstairs, uh, you used to have to go to New York City to do the, this kind of work, but now you can just do it all electronically. So, um, we were, did receive three bidders and Greg, I'll let you, uh, go through them.
Well, he just passed, thank you, thank you, and it's good to have you back.
Thank you.
It's, uh, what we did is we went out for bids and we received those bids at ten thirty this morning and we went out with a double A minus rating, which is excellent. We got three strong bids, you see the tabulation sheet there, the lowest bid was a three point one seven, three, 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 three percent. That's a fixed rate that is pretty amazing for twenty-five year debt. We had the, the two other cover bids, one thing I want to be sure and mention is the winning bid was B O S C, Bank of Oklahoma Security Corp. And it may not be reflected there, but also you had participating in their account was F N B, the local banking institution that normally what happens is when you have a local bank like that participating, that helps drive the rate down because they have local interest, they have a commitment to the community. So, want to be sure and recognize them for that participation. This is also about, we, we had, did our projections at three point five percent to be conservative, we're well with, under that. For those of us that have been through the millage calculations, we'll get with you in more detail, but this would have, at the three and a half percent, we would, we anticipated a five point one seven mil levy for just this portion, it's gonna be about a four point eight seven. So it's gonna have a ripple effect on how soon we can issue additional debt and, and keep under that ten mil levy. Uh, we anticipate having money April first, uh, just like I said upstairs, that's no fooling, it's, it's April first. We should close and you should have money and ready to proceed. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have. Three bids is a strong indication, what happens is you also have underlying, you have additional financial institutions in every single one of those accounts. So we probably had a, I'm just guessing this, but probably a dozen or more, uh, people in those accounts bidding. So it went nationwide and we're very pleased with that three point one seven. Be glad to answer any questions. You're, you're actually, uh, the award of the sale of the bonds, then the next item will be the actual passage of the ordinance, uh, authorizing the issuance and collecting of the taxes to pay it back.
So do. When somebody makes a motion, do we have to specifically mention B O K Financial Services, that they're the ones that get this, or how does our motion need to be worded?
I would probably, that would probably be best, just to say, uh, authorize this, uh, the award of the sale of the general obligation bonds to that, uh, B O S C.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, we entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the twenty million dollar general obligation bond to B O K Financial Securities.
Second.
Like we said, we're gonna do a roll call vote on this.
Ward one.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six. Vern?
Yes.
All right, motion carried, we're on to second discussion item, to consider and adopt an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds in the sum of twenty million dollars by the city of Midwest City, Oklahoma, authorized at an election duly called and held for such purpose prescribing form of bonds, providing for registration thereof, providing for a system of registration for uncertificated registered public obligations, providing levy of an annual tax for payment of principal and interest on the same, fixing other details of the issue and declaring an emergency.
Need a motion on this?
And we will also need a, right, and an, for an emergency.
Once if it passes, we'll need a second motion declared an emergency.
Sir, Greg, Greg or John, anything else you need to add on this item?
Just glad to answer any questions, but it's just a formality.
Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Is that clear, is that a good enough motion?
Yes, sir.
Ward one. Ward three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six. Vice Mayor.
Aye. Now we'll need a motion on an emergency.
Motion to accept an, an emergency G O B.
To declare.
I mean, to declare G O B, Von.
Second.
Okay, do you have a motion in a second?
Ward one. Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Vice Mayor.
Aye. Motion passes on both the original item and the emergency.
Discussion item number three, consider and vote to approve a resolution relating to the incurring of indebtedness by the trustees of the Midwest City Municipal Authority, waiving competitive bidding, approving a sales tax agreement, and containing other provisions relating thereto. Uh, this, uh, action, if approved, would, uh, initiate the, um, refunding of the series twenty eleven bonds associated with the Reed Conference Center and would, um, provide for, uh, a, uh, refunding of those and, uh, a new bond issue that would replace those, um, that would, uh, the proceeds of which would be used to renovate, uh, portions of the hotel.
Is that Greg again?
Uh, yes.
Hi, long time no see, but this is, uh, this is what we've done here is, and I won't get into the details of the projects because that is not what I do, but under, under what's been contemplated by the city and the, and the authority on the specific projects, you've got outstanding bonds that we can refinance and extend the final maturity and the goal was is to keep your payments basically the same and we can do that. Uh, we're, these are not to exceed figures, we're going out for thirty years, we're keeping the payments right within just a, just very near parameter in what you're paying currently on the two thousand eleven bonds and we were generating as much as we can. And under this scenario, under current market conditions, if we extend the debt out to thirty years and issue what we can and keep the payments the same, you're gonna net approximately twelve million dollars. Now, the, the, the reason, the beauty of this from that standpoint is just by refinancing the outstanding bonds, we save about one point four million. So that takes care of a big chunk of the cost of issuance and, and different aspects of it and reduces the borrowing cost, but that's what we're contemplating, all of this action will actually be taken in the public trust in the, in the municipal authority. But the city, as I'm sure you recall, has to bless whatever that authority does because they're the beneficiary. Now, I'll be glad to answer any questions, that's the, 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 uh, like I said, the payments are basically the same. As we get further along, you're authorizing us to proceed and we start getting everything together for a couple of different reasons. Number one, you're gonna need money to award a contract when you get to that point. Number two, interest rates are still extremely strong. We can go ahead and proceed and then we will lock in as we get a little, in the, the next few weeks and they find out a little bit more information about what's going on and so we can issue less than what the parameters say, but we can't issue more, so that's why you see a cushion. Currently, we would be doing about a thirty-three million dollar bond issue. We've got the cap at thirty-five. We will only issue what we can pay for with the same payment and then generate as much as we can out of that. And it, it will probably change some, to be real candid, but we don't think it'll change a lot.
So we're on the proper, doing it right. Craft the motion, it would be to, how do you want, how do you want us to word this?
Just, the way it is.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Yes, sir, and then, then the, the bigger details will be in the, in the trust when we actually pass that resolution.
Second.
We ever need a roll call vote on this, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Ward one. Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Thank you.
The, uh, fourth discussion item is discussion consideration of accepting the Oklahoma Spartan Youth Organization twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen revised financial statement. You have some information in front of you this evening. We have discovered that the financial report that was provided by, uh, the, uh, youth organization, the Spartan Youth Organization, did not actually get in the agenda, the correct, correct financial report did not get into the agenda package. So, we would ask that you table this, I'm gonna hand this out to you now and we will make sure that we get it in the right, get the right report in the next agenda, but we would request that you go ahead and table this item this evening. No, it, it, the agenda item is, will come back in its current format, but the attachments can be different.
Mr. Henson, if I could. The financial statement that is loaded up in the agenda packet is the one that was submitted back in August as a, just additional information. The one that you were handed out just failed to get loaded up along with that document.
So you just gave us one of all zeros.
That's the way it was submitted, yes. And I apologize for, for that happening, that was just an oversight on our part. It's.
We could just.
We have, we have. I'm technologically challenged, let's just put it that way. It just didn't get loaded, so. Yes, ma'am, and the template that was, you'll see, if you look at your agenda packet, the template that has nothing, had, everything's blank, is very similar to the one that had, that you were just handed by Mr. Henson, that has all zeros on it. Uh, that was our, the template that, that, that the director of the organization was given, uh, that was developed by our finance director, uh, with the help of staff and at the suggestion of the mayor and the council. So, uh, you'll see that he submitted one in, in, in a similar format, just.
I have a.
Not a lot there, so.
Issue as far as I understand, you want to table this, we do have a copy in front of us. I think if you've read the memorandum that was attached explaining the interaction with O S Y O or O Y S O, depends on which way you wanna switch the letters around there, um, there are definitely some significant issues here. The fact that they went from submitting one form to us with set numbers then to now saying that everything was volunteer and everything was collected by different teams or clubs, um, I have a real problem with. And so I'm just gonna say this upfront, whether it comes back or it doesn't come back on another item, I think the problems remain the same and I certainly do not support this organization running our football league program.
Well, um, if we're, we're not addressing it, I think it's still, make statements during the, the decision.
One of the reasons I'm asking is that should we come up, I want to make sure we do this right, if we want someone to, he can come up in the business and have to say what he wants to, or he can just come back in two weeks and address it at that point and we can actually talk back and forth.
I would point out the only item that is on the agenda of this session is the financial statement.
Okay, and I think that we need to allow, um, this organization to bring back the correct template and that we should, uh, I'm not gonna judge anyone that, I don't want this, someone running this particular football because I think it's a great, uh, organization and it's, uh, the, this man takes his time, I forgot, Dion, what is your name, sir, again?
Dion Williams.
Dion Williams, I thank you for taking your time to even, uh, try and ha, even work with these young children and these young kids, uh, as you have. No one else has done it, so I thank you for your, for what you do. So if you just bring us back this and we're gonna table this, thank you.
We'll get the correct, we'll get the one that he submitted loaded up in the agenda correctly next, next go round.
Don't we need a vote to table it? A motion, maybe? And it'll come back the way it is, which is all zeros, which is the way it was submitted.
No, if you take no action, it can come back. If you table it, it'll come back exactly like it said. So if we take no action, if we table this and they want to change anything on this, nothing can change other than the number. If we want to take no action, that means if there's new information that comes in the next two weeks, this can change, am I correct?
That's correct.
I would rather take no actions, I mean, I would rather, yeah, take no action whatsoever, that's me.
Then that's fine.
I second motion to that.
Well, keep in, keep, I just want to make sure.
I just say I agree with it.
Mayor, just make sure it's clear, the hard copy that Mr. Henson gave you is his financial statement.
That's what was submitted with all zeros in it, correct?
That's what he, yes, that's correct. That is his financial statement, it's not a mistake. It was my mistake by not loading it into Agenda Power. I'm the one that made the mistake, he didn't make a mistake. I did.
They supplied this item with all zeros in, if you read the memo that was attached from staff, after our directive to work with Christie and Christie providing the template, it was supplied with all zeros in it. So, there's no other information to upload or consider, which I don't, oh, hold on, Sean, I don't understand why we're either gonna table it, take no action, either way, we've been dealing with this since last August.
Okay, the, the reason that I would suggest that we take no action on this is that, just from the sentiment right now, we need to, we need, the only thing that we're doing, if we take any action tonight, if we voted on this agenda item, the only thing that we would be voting.
Right, it's the financial statement of all zeros.
Financial. I'm not sure about you guys, but I'm not real comfortable accepting that as their final document. I would like to give them the opportunity to, if this is, to, to give them the chance to fix this if there's anything wrong. If there's nothing wrong and they come back in two weeks, then that's when we will be able to deal with this and anything else that comes as a result of this document. Is that correct? I agree.
I just think as long as that's gonna happen, then this needs to come in in two weeks too, with the explanation in the memo that says it was submitted this way intentionally, that's my point.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, my apologies for not loading it up properly, sir.
Well, I do think we need.
You've had a lot on your plate the last month and.
Well, it's inexcusable.
You and Tim stepped up and Jill, we're not worried about it.
Okay.
We can wait two weeks.
Thank you, and I would like to hear him speak whenever he. And I would like to hear him speak whenever he comes back and explain it. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Okay, the last discussion item is discussion consideration of approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Midwest City and the International Association of Firefighters Local twenty sixty-six as negotiated to be effective from July one, twenty eighteen to June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Catherine?
Okay, so, I think really the memo covers everything that changed in the-
Catherine.
Oh, you can't hear me, I'm sorry. This is the first time I've had to stand in front of the microphone.
Project a little bit better.
Okay. Yeah, when I'm shy, anyway. That's not very often, though. Okay. Thank you. So, really, the, the memo explains everything that changed in the contract. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this point. He's there.
The thing that I think is important is that we've now, the city has successfully negotiated a contract with both unions for two years.
Yes, we have.
And that is a, that's a big weight off of everybody's shoulder for two years because there's a lot going on and this, to do that takes a lot of effort from Catherine, from the chief, from the F O P, from the firefighters' union, and it, it directly affects a lot of people, including the non-union people. And it just puts a lot of work on a lot of people and successfully have taken this off the table for a year, or actually two years, or a year and a half.
A year and a half, actually, at this point. I'd also like to thank other people who assisted with this. This assistant city manager was key in helping us to get this contract this year, so I appreciate his assistance.
It's come a long way in a couple of years, a long way.
Any other questions?
If there's no questions, entertain a motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passed.
We're now in the new business, public discussion portion of the city council agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to present any new business or public discussion for the city council? There being none, then we will move into executive session. I think we want to recess, make a motion to recess the council agenda at this point so we can finish the rest of the city's business and then we will come out. We'll go into executive session later.
Motion to recess the council agenda.
All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, you have some further information items there that are there for you to begin your review and I'd encourage you to, if you've got questions before the next council meeting, to please give us a call and we'll try our best to, to answer these. These are not on the agenda for public discussion, just as further information.
And recess the city council meeting at this time and call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority agenda.
That's correct.
We have a consent agenda.
Sorry, I'm getting there. New iPad and I'm figuring it out, so. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with approval of all trustees or members, or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Mr. City Manager, I believe we need to pull item number four and vote on that separately? Is that, it has to do with the bonds?
No, that is, that is C one. It's C one. It's a discussion item.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, this first discussion item is consider and vote to approve a resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed thirty-five million dollars Midwest City Municipal Authority refunding revenue bonds, waiving competitive bidding on said bonds and authorizing the sale of the bonds at a discount, authorizing a supplemental bond indenture, sales tax agreement, bond purchase agreement and such other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required and containing other provisions relating thereto. This item relates to the resolution that was passed by the city council regarding the issuance of about thirty-five million dollars in bonds to be used, refunding of that. The proceeds of about thirteen million dollars would be used on the renovation projects at the hotel and the Reed Conference Center. We will need a roll call vote on this. I don't believe there's an, there's no emergency there, so. Greg, anything you want to add?
And just if there are any additional questions, like you said, it's just the reaffirmation and the actual authorization of the issuance of the bonds. We'll need a motion on this? Motion to approve. Okay.
Ward one.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
Four.
Aye.
Five.
Aye.
Six.
Aye.
Mayor.
Yes. Motion passes with your votes.
The next item is new business and public discussion. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to present any new business or public discussion to the Midwest City Municipal Authority?
Adjourn the Midwest City Municipal Authority and enter, open the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority agenda.
Again, we have a consent agenda item, agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to, move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
First discussion item is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. No action is necessary on this item. We have new business and public discussion. Is there anyone in the audience that has any new business or public discussion items that they would like to bring forward to the Midwest City Hospital Authority? There are none. We have two executive sessions. We will not need the second executive session. We will want the first executive session and I'll go ahead and read that. Discussion consideration of one entering into executive session as allowed under twenty-five O S, section three oh seven B three to discuss the purchase or appraisal of real property and two, an open session authorizing the general manager slash administrator to take action as appropriate based upon the discussion in executive session.
We need a motion to go into executive session. We're going to recess this agenda and then we'll do both of them at the same time upstairs.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we're going to recess the Midwest City Hospital Authority agenda.
Let's go on to the economic development.
Enter, go into the Midwest City Special Economic Development Authority agenda.
Again, we have a consent agenda item. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the trustees, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all trustees or members of the audience wish, excuse me, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed, removed and heard in regular order. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda?
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
We have new business, section, agenda. Is there anyone here that wants to present any new business or public discussion with the Economic Development Authority? Seeing none. We have two executive sessions and I'm going to confirm with Mr. Coleman that we do not need either of these two executive session items. That's correct. So, neither, neither of those two are needed. So, I guess we're ready to adjourn.
Midwest City Economic Development Authority agenda, we'll adjourn.
No, you can just call it. Yeah.
Yeah, we'll stop. We're going to go into executive session. It will be a while. We probably won't be coming back. Oh, go ahead. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
I have a motion in a sec, do you have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any abstentions?
Can we do it now?
That's how we normally do it.
We're going to come back? Sarah, we're coming back to do?